Two beautiful little girls here, probably my granddaughters will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's one change to the agenda, we will not have to go into executive session, so let's skip that. Do I have a motion to approve the court of justice?
So moved.
Motion and second, discussion of questions. All the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. And the minutes of the May 19th meeting, do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Motion and second to approve and discussion of questions. All the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. And the bills, the bills in between are $119,384, $93. Do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Motion and a second, discussion of questions on the bills in between. And a motion and second to approve, all the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. And the current claims, when they follow $220,683, $83, do I have a motion to approve them? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion of questions on the current claims. And a motion and a second to approve, all the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. And communication from the public, Kara, you're first.
I just wanted to clarify any questions anyone might have on the storefront pageant. Has a few of those pink flyers around. So, the storefront pageant is for businesses downtown in Chicago and River and Jimm Street. The first 10 people got $250 voucher to sign up and they got paid from Ace Hardware, Cornell, and supplies for that amount. It was sponsored by, we had personal, we had private citizen sponsor, I'm one of them, Steven Karlischmanik, Wells Fargo, the Big Board, Kipas Springs Beautiful, the Southern Hills Economic Development Board. I ran this through the chamber and the Southern Hills Economic Development Board as well when we first started this. But we have the first 10 spots filled, we have her few days now, and we have four additional signups in the last four days. People can still sign up through June 15th, so they don't get the $250 voucher, but they can participate in the contest. They have to have their storefront cleaned up, painted up, screwed up and done by July 1st. Then the paper is going to help list all the contestants and the chamber is going to help with that as well. Getting the news out to the public on who the participants are and then the public votes on who the winners will be. That will be announced, we're going to coordinate that with the July 5th Saturday festivities somewhere here in town. And everybody has to get their vote in by July 3rd and then the winner will be announced July 5th. First prize is $1,000, second prize is $750, third prize is $500, fourth is $250, and fifth prize is $250. So there you go. Anybody have any questions about the pageant? They have to sign up through me and I signed a little agreement. There's also customer service training, they kind of get a gold star for it. If they go to tomorrow, it's free for any business in town, it's from 9:00 a.m. to noon. So it's here at the Mueller Center, it's Alsa Myers teaching that.
Thanks for spearheading that, that's a good deal.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Don Ackerman, did you want to speak down later about the EIS? It's only a ten delay. You're welcome.
I can talk anytime about the EIS.
Okay. Well, this is communication from the public, if you'd like to talk.
Okay, and I'd also like to talk about the.
Okay, or I start with EIS? If I may? Sure.
And then I just go on into the other. But basically, there's a lot of questions on the EIS, where we are today. That's the economic impact study being done. For a lot of obvious reasons, Shinseki has resigned, Petzel has resigned. So the question is, what's going on? And the best answer I can give you from the state VA is we don't have a clue. But I'll tell you what we do know, and this is straight up and very straightforward to you. If you do not submit information to the EIS study, you are in chance of losing whatever your opinion is. Okay, in my opinion, I want it to stay. And if you want it to stay, you need to say that. You need to say why you want it to stay and what the impact is to you, negative or positive. We have no idea where they're going to go on the next step. I'll be honest with you, I don't think the VA has any idea where their next step is going to be right now because the whole world's following around here. But Steve Distasio has not stopped his process. I'll be in Alliance on Wednesday talking to people down there. You need to get your information in, you need to give Mueller Center or the other points of contact on why you think the VA should stay open or why you should think it is closed. And we need your opinion, we the people, because it needs to be known. So EIS is equally important now and it's not slowed down. And if you need guidance on as a store owner or as a property owner, there's groups out there that have worked on it. If you need guidance for veterans, I'm your guide. Bottom line, EIS is still important, EIS still is being done. They could cancel it next week. But the good part about that is anything you put in writing will be in record forever as part of the economic impact study for Hot Springs. That will be a formal document that will be your opinion forever on the record. So the next time they think about doing something, that record will be there. Think about that for a moment, think how important that is to you to get your opinion. Because the next time they think about it, they'll have to go look at that study and see that information. Think about that, please. That's very important to all of us in Hot Springs. Thanks, Don. I thought Thune and Noem had brought that to us to a halt. Here's the interesting aspect, what Thune and Noem did, they've got a number of bills they're working on and God bless them for being very proactive and positive about how Springs out of COVID. Also Johnson, we finally got him to do something, but I didn't say that. Anyway, having said that, they've got those bills in, but they're tricky bills and they haven't been approved all the way through yet. And they're bills to stop money to fund EIS. And it doesn't mean they can't close it, they can find another way to fund the EIS, or they can find another way to close it. Thune's bill says they can't close it without the VA doing certain things. And he's a whole laundry list of stuff. Well, if you look what the VA's been saying before and past and present with facts, their facts, they prove their end result. So they could go to Congress with those items. EIS is one of the ways that we can fight that. So to answer your question, yes, our senators, our representatives are fighting very hard for us right now. And they're doing a great job. If you look at it realistically, when in the history of this country, it has a little mouse, Mouse Gordon, South Dakota, and got the entire Congress in it up. And that's what we're doing, and you can make great pride in that, Hot Springs, okay, you really do, because we've done it. And they're doing that for us. And you know, we don't carry enough votes to swing Thune, Noem, or Johnson. We're just a little town, so take pride in it. So. I don't know if I really answered your question, but the answer is yes, they're fighting for us, but no, it's not the full answer. They're doing what they can and we'll see where it goes, because they got to get everyone else to agree. In both houses, no unfortunately. Thank you, Donna.
Don, you can go online and do that, but if you should want to.
Yes, you can. And our newspaper has done a great job putting that on the news out there. Grab the newspaper, pull it out, it tells you where to go to, just go online and say what you think.
It was closed or something, there was probably, I believe it's.
Yeah, well, see, it's like, that's a government website.
Yeah.
Okay. What's a government website? I already said it, it just didn't work. And they said it was closed, and it's not closed. Our newspaper did a great job reporting that, putting that out there, and it is there available. So we need to go there and do that, or just drop it by the Mueller Center. Write up your statement, drop it by the Mueller Center, and we'll make sure it goes the word it needs to go and your name to be heard.
June 16th?
June 16th, as I speak. We're pushing for an extension, but that's not much time. Especially when you realize that they're not going to come down here and lay their proposal on you until the 14th. So they got two days to answer. Somehow that's not fair, is it? That is not fair. Two days to get an answer, or everybody in the city is pretty hard.
Especially of all 3,700.
Right, all 3,700.
Right.
And that includes Costco and the private, and they're all giving them a couple of days to answer these things. It's not going to fly, but we have to be on the safe side, getting our, at least our points. That's what we'll be talking about.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate it. Actually, Don said it's the economic impact statement, it's actually an environmental impact statement that covers economics as well as people's lives and historic building, it covers everything that's in there. It wasn't just economics, it's the whole environment, include people.
Okay. Mayor's obviously always correct, and he is. And on top of that, we've always fought for the veterans, we've always said because of the veterans, because of the veterans, because of the veterans. Now we're not saying that, now we're saying because of what's going to affect you. I think the entire council will agree with me when I say that if the VA goes away, taxes are going to go up, okay? And your property values are going to go down. Can I change that?
Thanks, Don. Any other communications of the public?
The real reason I came here.
I have a long agenda, I was trying to get to it.
And I get out of here. The real reason I came here is I wanted to talk a little bit about this summer and honoring our heroes and what we're bringing to town. I'm real proud of what we've done this year because we've included a lot more people within the community and it's a lot longer and there's going to be a lot more happening. One of the big ones that is important, and near and dear to a lot of people here, is car shows. And we think this would be pretty fabulous, this little car show going out here in town. I would start it down here, so you wouldn't have to. And I'm pretty proud, we could probably quadruple the money that the car show people make on their annual event. So also, I'm just going to read over the schedule of events very quickly and then move along. We have the wall coming to town and honoring our heroes parade on the 30th of July. The 31st is the opening ceremony for the Vietnam Memorial Wall. The first to the night will be a tent here called Through the Eyes of the Veterans Memorial, that'll be in the park. On the 2nd of August, honoring our heroes dinner for the veterans will be here in the Mueller Center and their families. These are all free events, by the way, if you sort of understand that. On the 3rd of August, which is not a free event, is the honoring our heroes freedom ride out of the state home. All the proceeds go to the state home, and that is also the day that the wall will go down. From the 5th to the 9th, we have nightly bands in the Centennial Park. They will start at 6:00 and then we'll do 10:00. Those bands are free, we'll pay for them. And then on the 8th of August, there'll be bike games in the, at Centennial Park. And then, of course, the 8th and the 9th is the car show. That's all nice and interesting and that's all free. But what we've done also is of no cost to the community is we're going to provide transportation. We're going to provide transportation on a daily basis, starting. I would do that. Okay, we're going to provide transportation from all the hotels in town to Centennial Park. That transportation will be around, it will arrive in Centennial Park from all the hotels at 2:00 and at 6:00 on Thursday, starting Friday, basically it will arrive there around 9:00, 2:00, and 6:00 from all the hotels in town at Centennial Park. In conjunction with that, on the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, there will be a transport of personnel from Hot Springs to Edgemont for the county fair. So what we've done is we've connected the Centennial Park events and the wall with the fair. So at no cost, people can come to town, get in the hotel, park their car, bus will come, pick them up, take them over to Centennial Park, then it'll take them to Edgemont, they can enjoy the fair and then they can come back here and enjoy the band that plays that night, and vice versa. The people from Edgemont can come and get the feedback. So what we've tried to do this year is make it a county, because we've got county money, we've got city money, we've got county money. We're trying to make it an event that enhances the entire town of Hot Springs and everything going on. And Kim and I and the entire team would like to thank the city council for allowing us to give this a shot one more time and put this together. I think it's a really fine event that we've got, and I think we've done a lot of good things for the city. And we did that for you. So are there any questions on what we got going on?
Does that carnival go in?
Yeah.
That's the week of war, that's camp. I don't take credit for anything either. I get in trouble for that. Anyway, no, but we're going to have three weeks in this city that is jam-packed. You know, starting mid-July, running up to the end of Bike Week. You know, if we can't pack everything in town in those weeks, then the city has made this happen. It's just a good idea, it's going to work really well. And now, all this.
The Coopers event.
Second.
It should help the Coopers event, it should help the.
And also now, this will be on the community calendar. It's all marked, all our stuff is marked on the community calendar, so we tore it up, including the bus transportation.
It's also in the South Dakota Magazine, so we'll get that in there.
We've got a lot of publicity all over, and we'll just see where it goes, guys, we're doing our best. Any other questions?
Thank you, Don. Just be good, I want to mention that Kim is working on another event in the river too. And we don't have an answer on the insurance that you asked me yet, we should be, we should have something before the next meeting. She's working on another event, it'd be a run in the river or is it a splash in the river?
River run.
River run. Anyway, she's still working on that, another event. Any other communication from the public?
How's your carnival doing? Ticket sales?
So far, so good. The tickets are available out at several different locations, so. You know, this is an opportunity for everybody to buy these tickets at a discounted rate because when the carnival does get here, they're going to be $24 a sheet for 24 tickets versus $15 a sheet for the 24 tickets. So now's the time to buy, and there's only 1,000 available at $15 a sheet right now, so. I don't, I don't know how the cities, I mean, I don't know how many you guys have sold down there with the city.
I don't know, Kim.
Kim, Ken or Sullivan?
You know, if there's anything that the city can help to do with, you know, any more promotions or maybe, I don't know if there's any funds in the budget to get it on the radio. I know Kirk did get it into the Hot Springs Star, a little belief about it, I believe, right in the community happening. So I don't know, maybe we can get a larger article, you know, just to let people know that, you know, the prices of the tickets. I know there's been a lot going on in the community, so. Is there any communication for the summer rec kids to get the word out there through the city? Through maybe all of the, like, you know, the instructors or the programs or anything like that, that maybe the city could?
Supposedly they may pick up checks, they can get a note or something. That's the people that we pay, but all the kids she's talking about.
I know, but they can tell the kids, can't they?
Sure.
The summer rec, maybe probably to get it. That would be Joyce Farrell.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
We're all, are the tickets available? Are they gathered by a lot of the businesses?
Oh, oh geez, there's Nelson's Oil and Gas and. Nelson Oil and Gas in, in Hot Springs as well as Custer. We've got First Interstate, Bain, Hot Springs, Edgemont, Custer, so, you know, trying to tie in the two other smaller communities. We've got American Legion, we've got Devolve, Ace Hardware.
Sturdivance.
Sturdivance. City Hall. City Hall, yeah, there's. I'm just wondering if we can, to put it that way. There is a, they are, there are at the hall. Me trying to keep all these different locations and things separate from all these events that.
Kara, Mueller Center too, right?
They're here as well.
I think they're here, the chambers. Good. Thanks, Kim, appreciate it. Any other communication for the public?
Don, I've got some communications, but I'll wait until it comes up on the back page.
Okay, all right. Any other communication for the public before we continue? Yeah?
Sure, just curious, will you tell them about the speed bump for the ALIA? I don't know what it was, Bill was talking to you, I'm just curious. We didn't have the meetings.
It's gone to two committees and those committees have not met yet concerning them, so as soon as the committee meetings meet next, they'll come up with some.
I went a couple of mile, like those weird guys working on the streets just cruising through at high rates of speed.
I'm just curious.
I did talk to one of them, he said it did help slow it down a little bit in your, and you can take it down some.
Okay, any communication with the public? I will continue, we've got first reading on two ordinances. The first one is Chapter 3A, alcoholic beverages. And what it is, is it's the entire chapter, it follows the state law pretty closely. Some of the stuff we did not have up to date, like farm lines, for example. And this is the first reading. If the council doesn't have any questions, I'd entertain a motion to bring it back to our next meeting for a second reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second to bring it back. Any questions, discussion? And a motion and a second, all the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? And the other ordinance is the fire and fireworks ordinance, it's Chapter 9A. This is the first reading. We shortened it down quite a bit from what we had in there before. It talks about burning in the city, talks about fireworks, and fireworks should stay the same as it is in our current ordinance. So I'd also entertain a motion to bring that back to our next meeting for a second reading if the council so chooses.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, discussion of questions on this one?
Yeah, I'd hate to be someone trying to sell fireworks in your town and you only give them about four days, basically. Try to make or break it, I guess, I don't know, maybe on the kids' side. I can't really see it as that big of a deal, but fireworks for more than a couple of days. But I know there's a lot of the people that feel that two days is too many, I mean.
There are quite a few people that think two days is too many.
Yeah, I know, Carl, you're one of them. And I, like I said, you know, if someone's trying to sell fireworks, you're kind of, you're really putting them at a disadvantage because other towns and surrounding communities let them have about two full weeks. But I'm just one vote, so.
Well, it'll be, it'll be brought back to our next meeting unless you have changes to make before that.
Well, it's not just one vote, you've got quite a few people in your district or in your ward that you're representing, so. It's not just one vote, you're looking at people that you represent.
Clay pistols and cap guns can be shot more than that.
Did you have a discussion from the council? Kim, did you have a question or comment?
When you're talking about that fireworks ordinance, are you talking just about the businesses that sell the fireworks for just the two days? Or, you know, just moving it down to the four days that you're saying?
You can only literally discharge fireworks for, it's actually from June 27th to July 4th. So I was exaggerating a little, I mean, they get more than two days, it'd be, depending on the year, maybe five, I mean.
You're quoting selling dates.
Yeah.
Well, sale and discharge.
Discharge is July 2nd to July 4th.
Oh, so I was, I guess, because I thought I saw it was only two days in there somewhere, so I guess I wasn't lying. I was telling the truth, but it was two days.
So with that clarification, I mean, if you're talking to the Fourth of July holidays, the sale of those, I mean, that's going to be hard. I mean, you're looking at low-income families around this area, that's up limited that window, I mean, most people.
This, the selling dates is the same as state law. State law controls the dates, we've copied that. We have changed the dates when they can discharge fireworks in the city from the 2nd to the 4th. And that's the same as it is in the ordinance today.
How long have they been allowed to sell fireworks out there?
Probably from the 27th to the 4th.
Out of Maverick?
Yeah, well, just south of Maverick.
No, it's longer than that.
Yeah, I think they've been out for like two weeks, right, that they're open?
Yeah, I could be wrong, I thought these were the same dates, I did not check state law, I thought it was the same.
Maybe they're building the deal label?
No.
I believe that's correct, in the Black Hills Forest are the days that you can shoot.
And they're outside of the boundaries.
But if you're outside the boundaries of the Black Hills Forest, it would be tied maybe more.
So that ordinance includes New Year's Eve event?
Yep.
Only the city can shoot them off New Year's Eve, people in Hot Springs can't.
See, there are these people that sell them, are missing another opportunity, but.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, some of the fireworks that they can sell shouldn't be shut off in the city either.
I know, Carl.
A lot of it.
Any other discussion, questions? I've got a motion and second to bring this back for a second reading at the next meeting, all the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? No. And personnel, there's quite a list of them in there. The seller recreation all starts June the 2nd and right about in the middle of that first paragraph, Michael Remington, we did not have a rate, that's supposed to be $10.35 an hour. He's an instructor, and you can see all the personnel changes on the, on the agenda. So continuing to whole business, we've got an easement we've discussed before and helped to pull work for the Keels. That was in your package, there's three different easements as well. What we have to actually do is to include the middle easement, it's the one that the city is giving, but they're all tied together because if any one of them doesn't pass, the other two wouldn't pass either. Ron, did you have something to add to this?
Not really, just here to answer questions if they arise, but you're exactly right, they all mesh together.
Prove easement?
Prove the second.
Got a motion and second, we approve the easement, discussion and questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Ron, did your buyers have any kind of problems or did they want to express any concerns or anything?
Not at all.
Okay.
Want to clarification, Mayor, all three easements have the city's signature on them. Because it's a three-way easement on all three, the attorney decided to, instead of having one joint easement, to have three separate easements, and at least looking at them, the attorney has the city.
Okay, thanks, so this would be to approve all three of them?
Approve all three easements.
Standing corrected, thank you.
Ron, are you able to share the results of sale at this time?
Brought $710 an acre, about $437,000 that day.
Who bought it? Can we go ahead?
The Hansons here, they live up, Hot Brook Hanson. Local people.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the easements, any more discussion or questions? All the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? And the stop sign issue, it was tabled the last meeting. Ron, I'm sorry.
Just want to thank you folks for working with us on this, and Harley's been a real gentleman to work with throughout this, he's a good man there. Enjoyed it, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next item was the stop sign, we had a motion at the last meeting to remove the two stop signs on 6th and League One on Cambridge. So that's the motion is brought back to the table. And that would be to take down the two on 6th and League One on Cambridge. Discussion. And now Frank, all the lit, I'll be the second.
I don't know how many of the council people are against it. I don't know if y'all live on 6th, or does anybody else live on 6th? But 6th Street's a very busy. But 6th Street's a very busy street, and Carl, the consul a year ago or so, decided they can't put a speed bump in, but we're gonna slow the traffic down. Traffic comes off the main drag here, they shoot up that street. We put up with a tore-up street for three years, we didn't have no traffic problem. But now, we do have traffic problems. To the extent, the stop signs haven't been enforced really good. Because the consul can't stand behind what they did, I think. Because, um, and I don't want to get into things, but I'll tell you what. When the consul agrees on something, and I don't know how many agreed on it last year...
Had to be in the majority for it to pass through.
Well, and I'll tell you, I talked to Bob, or Don, I talked to Carl, I talked to Harley, I talked to Bob Evans, I appreciate their time. Because I come in and I'm complaining about the fact that they don't stop the traffic, but I see there's a problem. Bob's a little short of hand, and he can't really be there all the time to pick people up. But when the consul, when there's people on the consul that don't believe in the stop signs, I'd like to know what the reasons are. And I've talked to...
I'll tell you my reasons.
Okay, what's your reason?
I sat down there for many hours for the last few, probably month and a half. I've only seen one person since that speed sign's been in there speeding on that street. That's your neighbor right across the street. My wife and I both watched him one night.
Okay.
But I've seen numerous, numerous times of people just blowing right to that stop sign.
So they stop?
No.
No, they don't stop?
So, me, the stop signs are a problem, it isn't the speed. Because only one person was speeding all the time I sat down there.
I can name some. I talked to this, I talked for help. I just go down to Don, Bob. Who can I talk to about a safety issue that's a blessing to us there on that street? Because cars are coming off this beach, some of them, now I can go out and almost tell you the ones that are stopping. Tourists know what a stop sign means, and they stop. Truck drivers have got CDLs, they're pretty good about stopping, because it's very important. If you see a stop sign, you stop. You don't go rolling through it. And the way it is right now, uh, people go rolling right through it. And, uh, well, I've talked to Don, but I'd just like to hear the consul, who's against the sign so bad? Where do they live? Do they live on 6th Street? Do they live anywhere close to 6th Street? If they don't, what's the reason for all the complaint?
Well, that, that was one of my, my concerns with regard to the numbers that have been tossed out there on phone calls that have been made. Where do these people live? Do they live in Ward, Ward 2, or Ward 3? Ward 1?
I've asked. Mine were in Ward, in our ward.
Okay, but do they live on 6th Street?
Yeah, a couple.
Up at the other end?
No, pretty close to the franks.
Pretty close to franks? But most, all of the people that, that you wrote, you got the petition signed by all the people that live within 200 feet of that sign area?
Now we got new neighbors, someone's moved away, we've got some new neighbors. And I was gonna say, the state's attorney says, Frank, citizens arrest. Well, there's guys out to shoot me right now, just because the signs are up. But I even put them up, the consul put them up, and I, I'm thanking you for putting them up, the guys that was in favor. The guys that can't stop now, I've talked to Don, I talked to Dwight, I don't know who Dwight is. I talked to Dwight, and he practically told me to get lost, Frank. That's a two-street, this, this, this. He was happy, I mean, to give you the time of day, we talked for a half hour.
Well, let me, let me...
I think we can control this problem without stop signs.
Are you gonna control it without stop signs?
Lower the speed limit five miles an hour, enforce it.
No, that ain't gonna happen.
Why don't we put children playing signs up?
I was just gonna suggest that.
I, I agree with you that the majority of the people who run that stop sign are probably locals, because they're not used to stopping there. You know, I've, for instance, the intersection down from Cart Quest, used to have a stop sign there. And you had to stop there every time you went to the intersection. Then they put up a yield sign. Well, I've been stopping at that stop sign for 20 years, so I still stop there every time I go to the corner, whether there's a yield sign or not. It's just what people aren't used to in this town.
Well, that one should be a stop sign, because you're a blind corner.
But my, my comment, my comment with regard to this is, if, if your 60 or 70 people are not residents on 6th Street, why can't they use 5th? That's a through street, clear, clear out to Evans Plund.
Well, that's what I...
6th Street is not a through street.
Sure it is.
It is not.
It should be.
It, it's a dead-end street.
Look in the dicks, you guys don't know what it is.
Past Washington, it's a dead-end street.
It goes right to the truck bypass.
You have, huh?
It goes right to the truck bypass.
Okay, let me explain, I've been looking at the dicks, Frank.
And you have a stop sign on, on Chicago. You have one on the bypass.
Which comes on the major highways.
You also have one on University, you also have one on, on Jennings. That is not a through street.
This problem can be fixed without stop signs, guys. Well, there's a motion, let's see who's against it and who's for it.
But what I'd like to say too, I talked to Dwight, we get into this, uh, it's a through street. If you go through street on 6th, you're gonna end up in the VA's basement. Now, Dwight says, man, people call me up, and, and you know, I was, I was on the consul, you know what I'd tell them? Hey, Jack, the consul agreed to put a sign up down there. Go talk to the consul if you want to, but why don't you tell that Jack guy, if you don't like to stop on 6th Street, go over to 5th Street, or go over to Main Street, they're both through streets. So why pick on 6th Street? We got a real good, nice, a nice smooth street, people are coming off it, and they stop. So the minute they, if they stop, they would realize, oh, we're in a residential area, we better slow down.
Okay, thanks Frank.
Well, I just, uh, it bothers me, and I, I've talked to Bob, I've talked to Don, it's, it's not hard, like Romi says. You can sit there, nothing goes on, please sit there, nothing goes on, but I'll tell you what, there's a lot goes on there. And I would, what I would like to see done, sometime tried, is Don, the consul, and Bob Evans, put an article in the paper that says, there's gonna be stop signs on 6th Street. We're gonna start enforcing them, so please, the public, take and stop at the stop signs. Unless you're having a baby or a heart attack, stop on 6th Street. Because it's a blessing to the people that live down in there. And, and they don't think the sign's good there. If the sign wasn't there, they'd go clear up to University, well, talk about a drag strip, it's a drag strip. But I really appreciate Don, Carl, Harley, they always agreed either, but at least they talked to you. Now, there's some guys on the consul, don't even speak to you, well, that's the kind of guys that you run into. Well, another thing I'd like to say...
Better make it really quick.
I've been on some committees, and, uh, well, let's take the grass. I want the grass cut short, he wants grass cut long.
I gotta stop because we gotta, we gotta stay on one issue.
What I was gonna say is, the consul, guys, if you make a decision, it's the consul's decision, so you should all be in agreement, regardless if you lost your vote or not. Instead of being in agreement, and then Dwight tells me, a year later, he's sorry, he made a mistake, well, that don't get it with the city council.
Well, Frank, can I defend myself there a little bit? I've had more complaints on that one vote than anything we've done on the city here. The plunge, everything, I've had more calls on that stop sign than anything. So I'm defending myself.
But I'll say this, Dwight.
And I appreciate your passion for this. That's great, but I think we can fix this problem without stop signs.
And you know what? The consul agrees, but you know, if there's one apple, rotten apple in the basket, they're all gonna get to end up asked.
Yeah, I guess I'm a rotten apple.
Well, and if, if our only, our consul members talk about the rest of the consul members, I don't see how the consul can win.
Well, Frank, no one's ever, I don't want a council that agrees 100%, because to me, that is useless government. So I like the interaction, and I like people happy and spirited like such as yourself, but I'm sorry, we're just never gonna agree all the time, so...
Well, and if the consul...
Let's just agree to disagree.
If the consul would give me a chance to go up the street again and see how many are against it, I, I don't think there's that many on our street that's against stopping.
That would be a council decision.
It takes about 10 minutes to, or 10 seconds to stop.
Yep, that's a council decision, right now I've got a motion on the table. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, one thing, historically, our traffic complaints and public safety, Craig, you have them report from the police department every month. Historically, traffic complaints and animal complaints are always the highest. So Frank, no matter what, our traffic complaints in this town, and I'm not siding for or against, I stay neutral on the whole Cambridge, 6th Street thing, but, uh, it's that way everywhere. We have everybody, you have kids, and they're speeding, those are the highest complaints in our town, so I don't know if, if that makes a difference so much, I just wanted to say that.
I'd like to ask the council meeting, the people that called Dwight, if he'd let me talk to them, the people that talked to whoever's against it, if they let me know who talks to them, I'd like to go talk to them. If they're in our area, I'd just like to ask them what a problem is.
Alright, thanks. Any more discussions from the council?
I don't, I don't think it should just be a, a decision for that area, because I reside up on, on top of the hill, but I use that street. So I think the majority who don't live there should also have a, a say in it.
Yeah, yep.
Not just the street.
Discussion from the council, Omen? We've got a motion in the second that we've been discussing to take the two stop signs down on 6th and leave the stop sign on Cambridge.
And that's another thing, Don, I'll say...
Are you ready to vote, council Omen? I'm sorry, Frank, I've got to vote. Any more discussion? All favor of the motions, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
Okay, thank you, we will be taking two stop signs down. New business, we've got a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for rural circles for the demolition derby. A motion to approve?
No.
Second, motion to approve, discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? And a couple of information items, the county accepted a little bit from Nelson's for diet number two diesel of $3.38 a gallon. And they accepted a little bit from MG Oil, their unleaded gas at $3.26.106 cents per gallon. Uh, there's a note out here to set a couple of bid opening dates. Dwight, is that yours from Public Works?
Yeah, it is, uh... This screw press, I'm kinda having second thoughts on that. Really, I see we got, I got a deal tonight on some cost estimates of what it's costing us now to allocate at the airport, minus buying $270,000 for us. And it's just my recommendation now that we just go to bid for the trickle filter, which is rusted out, it needs fixed. Let's see what that costs, and let's do a better cost analysis of what it's cost for us to allocate at the airport before we spend a quarter million dollars. Just think it through a little bit. I'm not that much against it, I mean, but that's a lot of money to spend, guys. What we're doing now works, and is bought paid.
Now, these numbers are different than I was thinking before too.
I just think we can take our time a little bit on that one. You know, a quarter million bucks would go a long way for infrastructure upgrades. Two, so I, it's up to the council this time.
Do you want to table this?
I want to table the screw press and, and go for bid for the trickle filter.
Do we have any discussion on what that trickle, trickle filter might cost?
That's about a quarter million.
It is, okay. Alright, so is that a motion to...
We won't know until bids come in.
Is that a motion then to go to bid for the trickle filter?
Yes.
Second.
Got a motion in the second to go ahead and bid for the trickle filter at the sewer plant? Discussion of questions?
Yeah, I guess, I kinda was led to believe, maybe we could sell that truck and recoup half the cost for that, uh, press. And I, I kinda thought it was such an issue to allocate this stuff at the fields, it's why we was kinda maybe heading this way. So has something changed that... I just kinda got cold feet, because I don't, you know, that's a lot of money, taxpayer money to spend. When we got a system that's working now, it's bought paid.
The reason it came up in the Midwest, if you remember, the council said that they don't want to apply any sludge at the airport. So we have to do something, and that was one of our options, is to find a screw press.
So what changed? The FAA was the ones telling us whether we could...
No, it was the council.
No, no. FAA said we can't allocate inside the fence.
Right.
But the council, I think, said that we would wait and let the managers handle all the application sludge, and I thought it said in there, no sludge applicator. Maybe I'm wrong, I'll have to look at it.
Just inside the fence, we can't, because FAA won't let you outside, we can't. Because, you know, I started this fight about two years ago, because I was told we were out of room to allocate. So I'm just curious, where did, how did all of a sudden, did we get back on track, and everything's just fine? It's like a shell game every so many years. This is just me, Wes. No, I know, no, I know. But I, I, I guess, I wish Tracy was here to, to clarify some of this stuff about where we found land now that we could use. The FAA doesn't want it inside, because it's wildlife traffic. Because the big, the water makes grass, and everything grow. That's the FAA's, we got enough tissue to use that in the winter time.
That one meeting, I think, it said that Tracy was gonna take care of the outside, the wildlife fence, which would take care of the sludge problem, but he can only go so much, you know? And they charted all that out, but Ed was to take care of the inside fences, airport manager, and then Tracy would be in charge of the sludge control on the outside acreages.
And I guess my question is probably with Tracy to find, to have him sit down, show me, I guess, his, his plan for the next 10 years on how, how we're gonna keep achieving this, so...
Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to table all this, to all the information is clarified.
You mean the screw press or everything?
The whole, all of it. We've got some numbers to compare together, and some information clarified with the FAA, and, uh, there's too many if buttons, maybes that are being thrown out here right now.
You're not going to bid, so you're not doing anything, so there's no need for a table motion, because you are just going back to look at numbers, and you're not moving forward with any bid on the screw press at this time.
On the other one, on the trickle filter?
The trickle filter needs fixed.
That's the motion, I think, that's...
Everybody goes down and looks at the whole top, and it's rusted out all the way around, and we need, we need to do something about it right now. And I'm not saying this screw press might not be a good deal, guys, but I just want to think it through a little bit, just analyze a little bit more.
What I understand is, is the, regardless of whether we go with this screw press or not, we need to have the trickle filter fixed, is that correct?
That is true.
Whatever happened to us finding out how Hill City's screw press works with them? I mean, everybody talked like this, and go up there and look at it, and then nobody ever did.
Three times that, that I asked about it, it was a scheduling problem, somebody had been there. So I don't think that was dropped on our end.
So then they offered to come demonstrate one for us here. So we didn't need to go to Hill City, we watched it work here.
And if we buy it, does the cost that charges us for doing that, does that come off the price of it? Wasn't that something like that?
I think it does, correct. But I think if we get some, in here, Tracy's, what I just got hand tonight, about 14 grand a year cost us to allocate at the airport.
This is a lot more information than we've had before. Wouldn't hurt to take a look at this for two weeks, and if we want to bid, we can have it at the next meeting.
Give everybody a chance to think about it.
Right now I have a motion on the table to, uh, go ahead and, and bid on the filter, the trickle filter.
Are we setting a bid opening?
No, we're, we're gonna get the spec all put together, and then put a date together, that's getting, we don't want to set a date until we've got the specs all put together by Tracy.
That's what your agenda says. Yeah, that's, that's bid opening, my agenda.
That's what they're doing, authorizing a bid opening, by the motion.
We're gonna authorize a bid opening, we're not... But how can we set a date?
Doesn't say bid authorization date, just says bid authorization, authorization to go... Doesn't say bid authorization date, just says bid authorization, authorization to go to this. As soon as the specs are ready, a date will be picked, and when it meets the, it'll publishing requirements.
Could I look at the agenda that you're looking at? Because mine says set bid opening. Nowhere does it say authorize, nowhere does it say anything like that. This is set bid opening. And I don't care what you're gonna do, but if you're gonna put it on the agenda, do what it says. Or put on the agenda what you want to do.
All I'm saying-
I'd have to agree. I mean, maybe we better just table everything here until we get figured out what we want to do, because-
We'll pick a meeting in July, and we have to be at least four weeks out if you want to set a date. Fight with me.
Well, I think it really ought to say, secure bids for, or something instead of- If that's the case, I'm gonna go along with what Dave said then, and let's just forget about the whole thing until we get stuff put together here, get all the prices ready, and then we'll go out for the whole works at the same time. Maybe by the next meeting, we'll have it straight.
So are you going to second his motion?
Yes, sir, I will.
So I have a motion on the table?
Yes.
I have a second. A motion in the second to table both items. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Ambulance property deed, we need to approve, written part of it. We need to approve the purchase of the, we need to approve the transfer of the property to the ambulance. We talked about it at a city council meeting, but we don't have a motion in the books to authorize the transfer. So we need a transfer, we need authorization to make the transfer of the property. That will be done by a quitclaim deed. All we basically need in our minutes is the authorization to make the transfer.
We talked about-
Two hundred, thanks. That's the land and the building that it's on because our-
Not the building, I mean the-
Our claim is for the land itself. But they have put a building on a piece of land, and if they don't use it for an ambulance, then it's supposed to come back to the city. And what the council decided to do would be to give that to the ambulance district. So we need a motion to approve that transfer of property.
I'll make that motion.
I've got two motions. One of them can be a second.
Okay.
Any discussion or questions now? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? And on the rental property out at Hotbrook, I also need an authorization to make the purchase on that piece of property.
I make a motion to purchase that property.
That's a second. Got a motion in the second to authorize the purchase. Discussion or questions?
Yes. How much is it?
It's gonna cost the city fifteen hundred. We're splitting the cost.
Just fifteen hundred? How much property is involved?
Not a whole lot, but it-
It's that old easel around the beginning, it's between where a pump is, pump station and the hill. I don't know how many acres right over there.
I don't know about the acreage, but it's fifty foot wide by six hundred plus feet long around the, the two quarter sections that we own going up Hotbrook in the ninety-seven acres that we have at the pump house.
And without it, our land's split now.
Yeah.
I have a motion in the second to authorize the purchase. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Uh, is there a good time Friday? We normally canvass the election, it would be tomorrow. Normally canvass it on Friday. Is there a good time for everybody? We can do it late in the afternoon, we can do it at noon, whatever works best for the majority. I'm not gonna be here Friday. We'll do it without. Wes, is there a good time for you?
Anytime.
Okay. Is there a good time for you, you know?
There's no good time for me.
Anytime?
No.
Six AM is real high evenings.
We can do it late afternoon, is that-
I won't figure it out.
Noon? You wanna do it right at twelve o'clock noon?
Sure. I can do that.
Alright. We'll do it at noon Friday. We'll have a meeting in council.
You, you get count, you shake your head yes.
Sure.
Just seems kinda odd there.
Okay. We'll do it noon on Friday. The Pizza Hut? At City Hall. The meeting will be at City Hall. Heating and air conditioning at the airport. We talked about this at the last meeting and decided to put it on the, the agenda for this evening. Craig, you want to attack this on airport, air conditioning?
Yes. We, we put on the agenda, I mean, a budget for an air conditioner unit at the airport. And with that old heater in there, I think it's just, I dare not say it wasn't, I think it'd just be stupid not to go with the new heater, too. It'd save on propane in the long run, and I think we ought to just buy one whole unit to get it over with. It's that old heater, it's been in there since they put the building up. It's not very efficient, and sucks the propane.
Yep.
Fine.
The reason I didn't want to do it last time is that we have less budgeted out there than, than we have than the cost is on these estimates. And we don't have any money from Pete Lee and we had thought we'd have, because that deal's not done yet. So I'm afraid to spend the money without, without some money coming in. What's the council decision?
Well, we can use the contingency, I guess. I, I just think right now we oughta, we're buying an air conditioner unit because it's in the budget.
How much do we budget for the air conditioner?
Thirty-one hundred dollars.
And instead of laying a fifty-five hundred for the complete unit?
Can you give me an estimate on how much propane we use for heating this pass filter?
Oh, hot.
Well, before that new hanger was put up, they're going to-
Just under six thousand dollars. Fifty-nine hundred dollars.
Keep in mind, that was just, we still have-
We, we should've went back about three years before that new hanger was put up.
Well, you, you can't, yeah, because that includes the new hanger for the year when that-
That's what I'm saying, we should've went back.
So if we were to take a quarter of that six thousand and say that's what it costs, would you guys be comfortable with that?
No.
Well, more than that.
No, I don't think so.
You don't think so? You don't think so?
It's, it's quite inefficient.
He's a fuel expert.
It's quite inefficient, but you're not gonna save four thousand dollars a year. I sure be that.
I said a quarter.
Yeah.
Even.
Quarter to six, two grand.
How much do you use over two grand a year?
What do you want to do with them? I don't know. I think by any difference, probably talking to two thousand dollars. It's, it's kinda ignorant to be either gonna be in there at one time doing air conditioning. Might as well have one or doing the service work just to go in and put the heater for the two thousand dollars.
That's right. Because you can go and buy a heater and have it-
You're giving up the benefit on your investment.
Thirty-five hundred dollars and then have them come back and install, make it so it's installable to have the air conditioner.
I make a motion, we buy the heating and air conditioning unit at the airport.
I'll second that. Got a motion in the second. More discussion?
I agree with you. I mean, if you're gonna do it, do it right. But I mean, if you're thinking you're gonna save a couple thousand dollars a year to pay for it, you're gonna save, but you're not gonna-
Recoup your money two years, you're thinking four or five years down the road, we would pay that difference.
Oh, yeah.
And it, it'll be a done problem. That's the way I'm looking at it. More discussion?
The roof's upgraded.
Yeah. Got a motion in the second to purchase the heating and air conditioning at the airport. Do we have contingency money to, to take care of that?
Which is, I've, I've not heard, not a dollar in those.
Yeah, we just decided to do it. We didn't take a look at which bid. I would guess we would do-
Low bid was forty-seven fifty is what I see here.
Are these two bids pretty much apples for apples hardly as far as the electrical?
That would be a question for our heating expert. Wes?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not in the middle of that deal, but-
Motion on the, the motion on the table is to put in the heating and air conditioning. We can take a look at this and take the best bid. It probably would be the low bid. But that wouldn't be a council decision. We'll just take the best one of the two. Does that make sense? It's the way I usually do this. One is the same thing.
Yeah, one of the bids does don't include the electric work.
Which one of that?
The low bid.
And the electrical on this, the other one?
Yeah, because this is two twenty and they'd have to put power out there. I mean-
I don't, I don't see it on either bid, but I don't know. It's hard to, I guess.
I would have a motion on the floor to put in the heating and air conditioning. We will have to figure out the best bid and go with it. And my question-
Sounds like we need more work than just this.
Yes.
I think we'd better table this, too, until we get some good numbers.
Yeah, it could be it. You don't know what the electrical is gonna cost you.
Neither one of them had what it's going on.
Just says install new heat pump.
That's actually come in, says they don't. I will second the motion to table till they require all the information we want.
Ed, did they say, is, is your panel, is it large enough to, I guess, accept it? Because what you're gonna need, the two twenty fours outdoor unit, did I guess, did you get these bids or who got these? So I guess my question would be, is our panel big enough to accept another breaker for the outdoor unit? So I guess that's gonna be something we need to find out.
Do you know what the average of your panel is at?
About some amount of spaces.
I know, but it has to be like two and a half.
I've got a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'd second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a second. Got a motion in the second to table. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Is it possible to get this stuff by this week?
Hope so.
I think we should try it.
I don't know, I, I don't understand why you need a two twenty to run it.
Because depending on the option, it's gonna be a lot bigger unit, because there's never been one there. All you've had is just a furnace with one ten.
Window air conditioner for one ten.
That might not even be a hundred damn bucks, five to six years out there. Probably in the fifties, nineteen something.
So do you, do you know, do you have screw in?
I can.
Do you have screw in to use it on that? No, it sounds funny, but it's a serious question.
It is. No, we could go out and check it out.
Who's the banker out there? I might have to get pretty spendy in a hurry if we got.
Okay, it's tabled. We will try to deal with it the next meeting, have an answer. We've got a flat through the back of the Silver Springs edition. We don't have all of the property owners up there agreeing on this. Well, we haven't approached some of them yet. So if you want to approve this, you can approve this as long as we get the approval of all the affected property owners up there.
Again, this is another thing that if we don't have it in hand, I don't want to do it.
If you want to wait, we can wait. There is one sale that's pending. He's trying to see if we can get this done. Just so you know it, there's sales pending. They're looking for the legal.
This is a long campaign.
That is not the seller or buyer's problem, it's a city problem. So you know which lot they're looking at? They're looking at Carl Worley's old house.
Up on the hill?
Ten R.
I bet somewhere else bought that.
I think it's lot seven or eight.
They're, they're waiting to get it.
No, it's the other one. It's ten eleven and twelve. Waiting for this. That's why I said-
Ten, eleven, and twelve is the one.
It's ten eleven and twelve. They're not selling the other ones. They're self-diving. Under the old plating, it's ten eleven and twelve. Under the new description, it would be lot ten R, combining all three lots into one.
Well, who's, who's- We don't agree at the building.
I think everybody will, because they haven't all been approached yet. That's why I'm saying you could approve it contingent, getting all the approvals on all the affected properties.
For the benefit of the public, the Allman Street Street Project that's done up there now, if you go up above the plunge on Summit, all the roads where they were were in people's lots, and the street right away were going through houses. So the whole, the whole hilltop was not booked where the flats said they were. So this is a cleanup effort trying to get legals-
I make a motion to have it tabled until the homeowners are all in the fight up there.
I have a motion that we wait on this until all the homeowners have been notified or agreed.
Agreed.
Got a motion, we wait on this till all the homeowners have been agreed? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
How did you know? And the community action building demolition, we had it on our agenda. We're, we're trying to get some more bids, so really we can't take any action on that. I thought we might be able to, but we're still getting some proposals on demolition. So we don't have anything to act on this evening.
How many do you have at this time?
No, I think there's just one. But there's a couple of people looking at it that are interested. We just don't have the numbers.
We did not get any bids when we formally bid for the demolition. So several contractors were curious if they could still bid, and we told them yes. We received one verbal quote and one written quote. And when we contacted the verbal to give us it in writing, they decided that he didn't want to do it for that price. And it was near double of what we have in the budget for demolition. The other proposal is almost tripled. Partially because the DOT said that we have to put up street light for the one-way traffic. If they block the street, tear that building down, we have to have the formal I automatic street light work to walk the street.
Hey, we would hope to have something before two nine. Community reports. Administrative promoter Carl, would you have?
We did not have a meeting.
Okay. Public Works, Dwight?
Just one thing I want to talk about, the, this mess out here needs cleaned up again. We talked about that, but nothing happened this week, so I need to get that cleaned up and looking better.
For the RV dump?
RV dump in the street swept and holes filled up to make it look presentable.
I think that trench that they dug through there, I think we still sink them in a little bit. I know they're not compacted.
Well, we can wheel pack it for now and then fill it back up with base cars. It's all, everything, every trench is gonna sink a little bit on. They're gonna get it packed.
Right.
Just clean up your mess is the main thing.
And then you got piles of concrete playing out here, but it looks like it's all around. Let's clean it up.
I know they were starting on that set, well, they were supposed to start the set, no. We'll see what it looks like in three, four days. Anything else, Dwight?
No.
Okay. Public Safety, Craig, did you have anything?
Yes, I do. It's kind of a sore subject. I hope nobody gets mad at me, but we didn't burn the river because volunteers wanted to clean it up, and I've had complaints about we've raised high and nobody's ever done anything yet. So I don't know if the volunteers are still gonna do that, or is anybody, was anybody part of that volunteer group that's gonna do the- Oh, there we are.
Well, there's a couple things in mind. There were thoughts on a workshop or workshops this summer on weaving, cattails, and so forth. There was discussion about that. Then there was discussion, too, about following the advice of US Corps of Engineers who advised doing nothing with it to protect all of the little entities being born.
Have you seen some of the thistle and stuff rolling in now?
I haven't seen the thistle.
I guess I'm a little confused here. The Army Corps, I guess, is one that recommended that we burn it, I thought.
They did.
Not just leave it. I mean, every year we have to rewrite history here. Every year. And I don't, am I wrong, Charlie?
The Corps says that we have to remove any dis, any, what's the wording I'm looking for? Obstructions or potential obstructions within the bloodway, as they call it. And that they do an inspection every year and give us a list of things that should be removed to include the little tree that's up by the depot. Along our welcome sign up on that end is a tree that they claim is in the way if we ever have high water. So that tree shouldn't even be there. Those are the kinds of recommendations that we're getting out of the Corps, and I've got to report. And they're two years behind on their recommendations, so I don't know how you can correct any of the problems before the next inspection when we just received the two thousand and eleven report at the beginning of the year. the two thousand and eleven report at the beginning of the year and they're already on to twenty-fourteen. So, you know, there's no way to get ahead of them if they're behind on their paperwork.
Well, the safety committee held off on burning the creek as we had promised.
Thank you.
They're gonna clean it and cut everything down, but nobody's even started yet.
There are some people, Jerry Baker and I had spoken with a couple of women who are going to join up and they're working on the river cleanup.
Is that...
Pretty soon.
So, so you are having discussions at this point?
Yes, yes.
So if we asked you to give us an answer, when are you gonna do this, like in the next two weeks?
Possibly. It's nice now, you know, the weather was kinda...
Come to the safety meeting, let us know, next week?
What time is it?
Nine o'clock on Monday.
I'll be there.
But I don't know if the city needs to cut all those things down, 'cause...
We're gonna have to reevaluate.
They are a problem.
We're getting, we're getting down, it's too far behind.
The thistles in a few of those places along the river are waist-high now and they're going to be spreading.
If we don't take care of it pretty soon, they're gonna put what they call balloon, you know, put up seed. Compound probably, probably ten-fold, 'cause then you'll have thistle seed.
At least ten-fold, oh, good, good God.
And just so everybody knows, we are a little shorthanded on summer help this year, so that's a problem we have to deal with also, that's why we're bringing this up.
And pressing the issue.
So, you know, it's gonna be hard enough as we have to do and it's important, so we need to do a kind of a work program.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Craig?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. And cultural rep, Wes, did you have anything?
No, we did not.
Okay.
We do have the master planning public meeting set for the tenth of June. Make sure you put that on your calendars so you can be here to get your vote in on what you think the park should look like. They have some interesting workshop programs that they're going to implement to get your thinking going. Could be a fun night.
What time?
June tenth at six P M., I believe.
I believe that is correct. There's, there's an ad in today's paper that came out that, or tomorrow's paper, I'm sorry, and they'll be in the following paper too.
It's in the chamber report as well.
Been in the community happenings and there's gonna be flyers around town.
Can I ask you a question about that park thing? We've put in the budget quite a few thousand dollars for playground equipment at Brookside Park. When are we gonna order that?
What you have in the budget is twenty-five thousand for equipment, thirty thousand for improvements, so a total of fifty-five thousand, of which you spent seventeen thousand for the master planning process of that money.
Yep, that was the playground equipment. I'd like no one to order the playground equipment at that park.
The cultural rep committee says that what they wanna have for it would be...
Beat Wesley until he gets ordered.
Get better.
Hey, Colonel Lam, any other questions?
Remember this sprinkler?
I think, I think they actually, if I'm not wrong, they actually, we've got water into the park now.
Yeah.
And...
Now, the improvements that they talked about was for the sprinkler system, so if you break it down on what was talked about a budget, twenty-five thousand dollars for Brookside equipment and thirty thousand for improvements, which was the water system, the sprinkler system at Brookside.
Does that include the restrooms?
That does not include building restrooms. I mean, that's one of the items that Matt, the planner, recommended there, so you gotta pick the location where that's going to be if we're gonna have a cleaning station. If you went by there last weekend, there must've been thirty or forty big holes there in the park and the river and no restrooms.
There's some big...
No place to wash off the sand or if you done...
Well, I think, I think Matt has got us kind of a little plan put together. If I'm not mistaken, him and Trace are kinda supposed to be figuring this out, is that right? And Trace can put some input, so we will have something here real shortly, maybe an idea, so then maybe we can figure out a gazebo or the playground equipment, so we can get moving forward.
Well, every day you go by that park, there's thirty, twenty, thirty kids there, every day.
Ever since you was a kid in it.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm getting the river.
I had a horse tank, I was, I didn't live in town there.
I was in there. Cut my footwork once.
Harley, just a couple real quick things. Got notice from the Wild Horse Sanctuary that they've added an ice cream shop out there, so, you know, if you wanna do a drive and eat your ice cream, the Wild Horse Cafe and Ice Cream Shop is now open eight-thirty to four-thirty, except by Sundays, twelve-thirty to four-thirty. They're one of our attractions at East Oak for ice creams. And then the grounds golf, I mentioned, were up in April. They are also up now for May. We hit fourteen hundred grounds of golf for May, which is over last year's amount for the number of plays for the golf. Not sure if we can say that the website, Key Time, go online and hook your fund, how much that has contributed to it, but we're getting a lot of comments about the availability to do that, so we'll see what June brings us. So far, everything's up. I believe that the committee for the master plan for Norby from coming on the golf course will be here on the Friday the thirteenth, so that committee is, needs to be available, I think, at noon that day.
Noon, noon to four, I believe. I think he's trying to condense this into one meeting and I don't think that's what really we discussed.
You can handle him when he gets to town.
I'd like to invite all you guys to drive down Fourth Street, you and I have to live with, so just come on.
That's gone, yeah. That's where we're going.
They'll be up to here all pretty soon.
You got anything else, Eric?
I have three, I have three quick items. We were talking about the diagonal parking downtown, where I wanted to do a try one section to see if it would work, see what people think, and this is like a fifty-fifty deal. Half the people would like to try it, half wouldn't. Talked to the state and they said, if you wanna try it, you oughta try it through the whole downtown area, otherwise you're not gonna really find out. And I have not talked to some of the businesses, I need to, to see if people would like to try it or not. I think we oughta let the business people downtown kinda help push us whether or not we wanna do it.
For the benefit of the public, we would lose, you recall a number of places, the state would like us to get rid of diagonal parking as it exists now and go to parallel parking. And we would lose fifty-two spots, I believe, altogether, but they said they would consider reverse diagonal parking, actually add a few for us, and that's where you would act with instead of drive in. And it's much safer, you know, when you're driving out, you're seeing no different backing into the spot that it is diagonal, reverse diagonal than it is for parallel parking, if you have to back in. It's the same kinda thing, you stop, grab your stops behind you and you parallel park where you back in diagonally.
Well, I would agree with you, if this was a perfect world, people would stop and let you back in. We're an older community and I see nothing but chaos trying to get them trained to back up. They're all gonna be crashing into the wall or driving through the barrier and...
Well, we're gonna be doing it for parallel parking for sure anyway, 'cause they will take off the diagonal parking unless we allow them to give a try on the reverse diagonal and decide whether it works or not. But they're strongly recommending that we remove the diagonal parking totally.
Have they considered getting a bike lane if you do the diagonal parking?
Yes. There's a bike lane, no matter what we do, we'd be considering whether we will stay reverse diagonal or not.
But then that's back to...
They haven't came back with a final design yet, so I don't know, they don't know what's going on, but I do know that the counters are out again, so they're monitoring how the traffic may have changed and what's going on there, so I think six or eight new counters I can see.
Got a little question back here?
Did you say at one point that lowers the city's insurance? And if so, does, do you know how much that does? I thought you said something at one point, that was a better deal by having the reverse angle.
Nationally, they said it's eighty percent safer than regular diagonal parking.
But will it save us on insurance, something through you?
I don't know that it would change our insurance at all.
That study, the insurance company, they originally did that study, it was done by the insurance company.
It'll keep people from turning U-turns in the street too, 'cause they'll be going the wrong way.
Anyway, we're still considering that, I'm gonna talk some businesses downtown and see what, see how they want, see what they want us to do, 'cause it's gonna affect their business. And as Don said, we've got the E I S statements that we shouldn't turn in. If you don't wanna turn them in here at the commuter center, to contact V A, there's a website, it's W W W dot regulations dot gov. It's very easy, I've been on there, you can see, that's the E I S for hot springs, you can make a comment, write online and submit it. It's regulations dot gov. And the last item I have is just a thank you to the Legion Riders, because I had eight or nine of them the other day, they got trained and were certified to do traffic control. So we've got ordered some handheld stop signs and slow signs now, but we won't have to call our police out for every parade, have the whole courses in town, so those guys instead, if they have a graveyard shift, they don't have to get up now in the middle of their night and come in for a parade.
They can carry guns?
Yep, AK forty-seven.
And they should get married with guns.
States, states can furnish all the weapons they need. And that's all I have, if there's nothing else, I don't have any motion.
I have something else. I'd like to make sure everybody understands, it's our voting day, get out and vote.
Get a vote up.
It'll be appreciated.
Also, it's all in business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion is second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.